At graduation, I got an email that said, hey, you have this textbook deal, $150. You can turn it in. Apparently it was a mistake.
All right, ready to go.
All right.
Let's see.
Did we lose Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is baseball tonight?
Softball. Lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse, all right, tell me something.
I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, June 6, 2023, to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. We have any changes or additions, corrections to the agenda?
Oh, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, uh, agenda's, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. First item up, Presentations, Proclamations, and Acknowledgements. First one is our Youth Commission Report. I'm pleased to have our chairperson, Thatcher Buck, come forward and share what the Youth Commission has done. Thatcher here as he's getting bit, uh, ready, has served two terms on our, uh, on our council, our commission, been very active this year, and what can you tell us?
All right, good evening, Mayor Wiesensel and City Council members. My name is Thatcher Buck, just finished my second term as, on the Youth Commission, and my first as chairperson. Thank you for giving me the wonderful opportunity to speak with you today. My fellow commissioners this year were Julia Alex as second vice chair, Ainsley Bartz as vice chair, Nadia Berman, Nick Essler, Kira Favre, Cameron Harvey, Marissa Jacobson, Kylie Knutson, Charlie Levin, Harper Levin, Sakshi Mahanti, Lizzie Narlock, Molly Pittson, Kate Reed, Miana Wallen Rhodes, Peyton State, and Sophie Thomas. Last June, former Commissioner Chair Abby Kenninger presented the national, the annual Youth Commission Report to the City Council. The Youth Commission was created in 2009 and is still going strong. This year was a busy year in spite of and because of a few weather cancellations. This past session, we've continued to meet with city officials to learn about departments and their specific role within our community. This year, we met with Mayor Wiesensel, the City Administrator Logan Martin, our Public Works Director Nick Egger, Public Works Supervisor Chuck Jacobus, Parks and Recreation Director Dan Schultz, former Assistant Fire Chief Jim Volker, Human Resources Coordinator Rachel Weaselman, Recording Secretary Ann Hayes and Jesse Pakay, and Police Officer Kathleen Rusink. We continued to tour city facilities, elevating our knowledge of not just the role of the government within our community, but how our government, our government carries that out. This year, we visited Lyons Park, we toured Fire Station Number Two, the Conomera Water Tower and Wellhouse, and the Police Department. Mayor Wiesensel continued to work with us on our leadership skills through monthly lessons and reflections. With the Parks and Recreation Department, we provided input on the playground proposals for the Kidder, Biscayne, and Clarit Parks. During our May meeting, we helped transition the new members onto the commission and assisted with the election of the new chair, vice chair, and second vice chair positions. We got to attend special ribbon cuttings and access events such as the North 20 groundbreaking, the Home Depot Flatbed Distribution Center grand opening, the Mr. Wish grand opening, and a few others. Moving forward, though, the Youth Commission has a few goals to increase our impact within the community. These include supporting new and existing business work opportunities to help students gain more employment experiences, which we know are so crucial for development and growth of our youth, promoting youth volunteerism to better our community, support additional recreational facilities for our teens, young adults, and adult citizens, support the development of neighborhood parks with features suited to the needs of our youth, and to tour more cities within Rosemount. As well, we want to continue to increase visibility and participation in our annual programs, including the new spring senior event, the holiday tree lighting, the living legacy tree planting, and, my personal favorite, the splash pad summer celebration. To further develop our relationships with partner organizations such as City Council, the Parks and Recreation Department, Rosemount Area Arts Committee, RAC, and school volunteer and nonprofit organization partnerships, we want to further develop our leadership skills to support the new and future members of the commission. And as a former chairperson of the Rosemount Youth Commission, I want to thank all of you, employees of the City of Rosemount and the City Council, for allowing us, the youth, to have a voice within our community. And I urge you to continue building a community that listens to the needs of its constituents, whether they be adults or they be, uh, us young'uns. This is a core part of what makes Rosemount special. Further, I want to thank Assistant, Assistant City Administrator Emmy Foster, uh, Mayor Jeff Wiesensel, Jesse Pakay, and Ann Hayes. You four helped delegate, delegate, advise, and coordinate our meetings and tours. Your guidance and support was absolutely paramount to our success as a commission. Without you, the people the Youth Commission, uh, are helped run by, we would not be what it, it is. Thank you. And before I release my burden as your former Youth Commission Chairperson, I have one more thing to say. My time on the Youth Commission opened my eyes. I, I learned not only about our government, what it is, and how it carries out its duties, but also about interpersonal skills, networking, leadership, communication, cooperation, and others I'm sure I have yet to appreciate. As the organization that follows this, one, that allows this wonderful commission to exist, I thank you, the City Council, for not merely allowing the material existence of the Youth Commission, but providing the resources, perspective, and time to change the people that are on it. This commission greatly, this commission and you people who run it are great, greatly impacts those who serve on it, shaping them as they continue their journey forward in life. Thank you for helping build the potential within these future trendsetters, changemakers, and leaders. Mayor and council members, I will now stand for questions. Thank you.
Open up for questions and counsel.
Where are you going to school next fall?
I'm going to Cleveland, so I'm going to Case Western Reserve University. I'll be studying, uh, really complicated science things that would take a while to explain, but I'd be happy to if you're interested.
A good UAA school.
What?
Right? Good UAA school.
What's UAA?
Their conference, their conference.
Oh, yes, yes, they're pretty competitive in those sports.
Competitive sports, for sure. Awesome.
When you look back on this year, um, what one thing will stand out most in your mind? Like, say, a year from now, if we asked you about your experience on Youth Commission?
I think it's the people I met.
Okay.
Like, going to events, touring facilities, and then meeting the people who made those things happen, that was particularly, particularly impactful. I think the Home Depot grand opening was really special, and I was really lucky to be there, because I met some really cool people. I met a guy that flew up from Baltimore, who was there for two months helping set up the HR department. And so, there's, some of those people and the lessons I've learned from them are indispensable.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
And just to, uh, um, put a little dot on exclamation point, and thank you for your service. I've, I've seen you go over this last year and take on quite, quite the responsibilities. I, I would, uh, maybe offer that, uh, maybe the Youth Commissions actually ran their meetings in themselves much more than maybe you think you did. So, appreciate, uh, again, your leadership there as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So with that, we'll receive the Youth Commissioner's report, and as you say, you are now unburdened with any more.
Finally, I'm done.
Thank you, Thatcher.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
That completes, uh, the presentation, uh, receiving the Youth Commission's report. We'll move on to item three B, the Small Cities Month Proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I can take that one. Uh, the City of Rosemount is a member of the National League of Cities, which is a really important advocacy association that we are a part of, uh, that hosts a number of, of educational training events for elected officials and appointed officials, and also, um, does a lot of advocacy on behalf of, of cities. They have a permanent spot, uh, in, in Washington DC, you know, advocating for cities. Um, and so, one of the big things that they encourage us to do in the month of June is to, is to proclaim June as Small Cities Month. And in, in, uh, so what's preferred tonight is to accept a proclamation labeling June as Small Cities Month here in the City of Rosemount. Um, the National League of Cities labels cities under 50,000 as small. Um, so in the state of Minnesota, and certainly nationwide, that is a large majority of cities across the country that would be categorized as small. So we are considered small, uh, in, in their eyes, and so, it is Small Cities Month, and so with that, uh, we'd love for you to proclaim that, Mayor, and, uh, we'll look to do some social media and some advertising for the power of small cities, the importance of the small cities play in the fabric of American democracy. So with that, Mayor, I can have you read the proclamation.
Right, so with that, I'll read the proclamation, the, and then we'll follow up with the, uh, motion to proclaim that and, uh, take that action. So whereas small cities and towns under 50,000 population are the home to millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority of municipalities across the United States, and whereas small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provisions of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens, whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support programs and legislation that strengthen small cities, and whereas small, state governments are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthen communities, and whereas organizations, businesses, and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in, and whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for a renewed intergovernmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small towns, small town America, and whereas the National League of Cities President and Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared June 2023 as Small Cities Month, and now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Wiesensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Small Cities Month in the City of Rosemount, and encourage organizations, businesses, and all citizens to recognize this event and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens, dated the sixth day of June 2023, Mayor Jeffrey D. Wiesensel. So with that, I'll enter that as a motion to proclaim June 2023 as Small Cities Month in the City of Rosemount.
A second.
Motion by Wiesensel, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Wiesensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
That completes the, uh, or motions approved five zero, and that completes that item. Uh, I would just note that it's well appreciated. I serve on the Small Cities Council at the National League of Cities, and, uh, it's a pretty big deal for us to, uh, to continue, continue to do this type of work. So, thank you. That will move on to public comment. Item four, individuals, uh, may come before council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda typically. Um, these, uh, you come forward, state your name and address, and keep your comments, uh, to three minutes or less. We will respond in letter or phone call, uh, within the week, uh, depending on what the, uh, the request is. So with that, I'll open up the podium. Anyone wishing to come forward may do so at this time. Good evening.
Uh, my name is, uh, Terrence Yurchuk, and I live at, uh, 14925 Charlie Avenue, Rosemount. And I'm here, uh, and I was hoping Dan Schultz would be here, but he's not. I have some questions on him, for him, that, uh, on the Stipple Center, because I'm also the trustee of the Rosemount Area Seniors, and, uh, the, what I, questions I have for him is on, uh, air conditioning stuff, because like, uh, today, we had a luncheon, and, um, I asked, uh, the building attendant to, uh, turn the air conditioner down, and they said they can't turn it down, and they can't, uh, turn, uh, the louvers on there to, because it, uh, the way it, it flows, it hits everybody about this high above the floor, and everybody was getting colds.
Can imagine.
And they were putting their sweaters and stuff on, so, and, um, also in room 100, uh, when we play cards and stuff, uh, a lot of the, especially the older women, they complain because it's cold, because they keep the temperature down too low.
All right, um, Martin, do you want to?
We'll make sure to have Dan, I know Dan and, and you know yourselves and so each other, and so we'll make sure that Dan gets in touch with you. I'll, I'll let Dan know in the morning.
Okay.
And the other thing I'm here about is, uh, and, uh, two people, the mayor and, uh, this, uh, city, uh, city clerk will be signing it. Um, I had a guy go over it, uh, it'd be two weeks ago today, and he found quite a few things in there that, uh, that are questionable, and they should be explained more than what, what, what they are.
Was there a specific document you're talking about?
Do I?
You have a specific document? Uh, the clerk and I sign a lot of things every meeting, so I'm curious.
For, uh, uh, the contract with the seniors with the, with the Park and Rec.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because they got your name on here and the city clerk name.
Yep.
And the person I talked to, in his younger years, he, he's done between, uh, 25 to 30 of these type of contracts, and he said on, uh, the second page, number two, it says, uh, no, we're not an independent contractor. And he said, uh, no, uh, senior club is a contractor. Now, I don't know why that's in there.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll have Mr. Schultz, um, review that with you as well, and then get back to us. I'm not familiar with that particular phrasing, but, uh, we'll take a look at it.
Yep.
And there was another one here that he got, uh... It's, uh, number three on the contractor. It says, uh, uh, RAS will maintain a liability insurance, provide coverage for, uh, commercial general liability with personal injury limited of not less than one million per occurrence or general air limitation of not less than 2 million. The City of Rosemount would be the name of the additional insurance on all policies and proof on insurance would be provided to the city. And he said that shouldn't be in there, because that's not, um, he called it a non-negotiable item.
And we'll, uh, refer that to Mr. Schultz and, uh, have him talk with you about that.
And there's a couple of other things in too, but there's a, another thing that, uh, I can't seem to, because every time I try to talk about it, is how they're going to take care of the, the money and stuff, which I do, because I'm the treasury, and, uh, I've been doing it for eight and a half years, and, uh, everybody says I do a very good job at it. And, uh, they keep saying, well, they can do a better job. I don't know how they can do that, because I don't get paid for it, and that the people that would be doing it has to get paid, and they don't want to do it because they, um, that's extra work for them, so...
Again, all those issues we'll, we'll bring forward, and then we'll be able to respond after, uh, Mr. Schultz has met with you.
Um...
All right?
So, what I'd like to do is, uh, since you're the one who's going to be signing the contract, I would like to have it, um, I guess you'd call it the stall, uh, uh, put it discontinued for a couple months until get everything all straightened out.
Well, currently, that's what's in effect between that organization and the city, and it'll continue in effect. We'll take, um, your questions and be able to respond to those shortly.
Now, but, uh, what they're doing is, we got a meeting, uh, the fourth week of this month, and the way I understood it, we'd be signing the contract, and, uh, and there's, they, uh, they won't, the Park and Rec won't, uh, listen to what we have to say on, uh, on our finances and stuff.
I don't know any of that, um, to be true or not, again, I would ask, uh, we'll have a meeting set up. Um, if you want me there, that's fine, I can attend, and, uh, but I'd like you to first meet with Dan to get all the issues there that are, uh, that need to be addressed. If we have to pull in, uh, our legal counsel to address those, uh, we'll do that as well.
So, I was hoping that you could stall it for at least a month or two.
Currently, that's what's in effect, or at least what's offered. We're under maybe an old agreement right now, and then this is the new one?
Yeah, Mayor, all I know, it's not on tonight's council meeting for action, so if, if the city already took action on it, if you folks choose not to sign the agreement for next year, that's within your power to not sign your side of the agreement, and you can kind of call a pause on the conversation, that, that would be fine, but unfortunately, just tonight, and this forum on, on, on TV and in front of the public eye is not the time to have the conversation, so we'd love to follow up with the time, we can sit down for an hour or two and talk through things, but now's not the, the, the perfect time to have those conversations, but we'll do that at a staff level, um, ASAP.
Okay.
You should, you should hear a call from Dan tomorrow.
Yep, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's about all I've had.
All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else wishing to come before council regarding public comment? Seeing none, uh, closed public comment. We'll move on to five response from public comment. I don't believe we have anything pending, so we'll complete item five, and we'll move on to consent agenda number six. We have, uh, multiple items here. Um, before we move on those, I'll, uh, just list them off. We have bills listing, minutes of the regular and work session from May 16th, an autumn path final acceptance, liquor license renewals, temporary on-sale liquor license with the American Legion, the addition, the addition of Juneteenth is a holiday, final acceptance of 2021 pond maintenance project, Schaefer Richardson conduit financing authorization request, order preparation for an AUR for Project Channel subdivision agreement with Amberfield's eighth edition, and amendment for Rosemont, Rosewood common second subdivision agreement. Would any items, uh, would council like to pull any items for further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, would someone like to move the consent agenda for approval?
So moved.
It's your second?
Second.
Consent agenda, motion for approval, um, motion by Essler, second by Climpel. Roll, please.
Climpel.
Aye.
Wiesensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Uh, consent agenda's approved four zero. I'd like to, um, restate my previous, uh, four zero is only present, not five zero. Thank you for catching that. Uh, with that, we'll move on to seven A, public hearings, request by KJ Walk for the vacation of easements. Mr. Keenberger.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, City Council's being asked to consider our request by KJ Walk in favor of the vacation of a drainage ventilator easement.
And public right-of-way easements over Outlet F of Rosewood Estates. I'll show a map and talk a little bit about the proposed development, um, but do always note as a part of these public hearings for easement vacations that this request is generally consistent with development practices where existing easements are no longer needed. And then due to the public nature, these easements that are being vacated, a public hearing is required. So here's a location map showing the parcel that is the, uh, the subject of the public hearing this evening at the northeast corner of Business Parkway and County Road 42. Um, the reason that this is being brought forward at this point is because KJ Walk, um, has secured New Horizon as a, um, new business to construct a new daycare center on this, this corner, and at their meeting on May 23rd, the planning commission did approve a site plan for New Horizon to construct a childcare facility at this location. The facility itself isn't necessarily pertinent to the vacation of the easements, but I thought it'd put it in a little bit more context for the request this evening. So here's a rendering of the proposed facility. Again, this is what the planning commission just approved, um, at their May 23rd meeting. Staff recommended action tonight is a motion to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of certain easements within Outlet F, Rosewood Estates, subject to certain conditions. And with that, can stand for any questions, and I would ask the mayor to open a public hearing.
The, you want council comments first, or we just open up the hearing?
Um, it's up to you, but I can certainly take any questions from council members.
All right, uh, any questions for, from council before I open up the floor?
For me?
Seeing none, all right, the, uh, consider the floor open for public hearing. Again, anyone wishing to come before, come forward and speak on this matter may do so. Please state your name and address, and if you can, limit your comments to three minutes Anyone? Going once. Twice. Seeing no, no one. Three times. Seeing no one come before, uh, council, uh, I'll move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, four oh. With that, um, any follow-up questions, concerns? Otherwise, I'll look forward for a motion in the affirmative of the recommended action.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the easement vacation request subject to conditions.
Second.
I have a motion by Freski, second by Climpel. Roll, please.
Wiesensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That completes seven A, vacation of easements. That will move on to eight, we have no unfinished business this evening, nine, new business, receiving bids and award contracts, best value work scopes for Public Works and Public Ampus. And who's got that? Mr. Mr., if I can find the, excuse me, as I'm trying to get my computer current. All right. Mr. Egger, please come forward.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Weisensel, members of council. Tonight, you have a resolution before you to consider award of contracts on the Public Works Police Campus project. We're continuing to knock those out here as we bring bids in. Seven of the eight contracts on the resolution are a best value process that we did for some pretty critical components of the campus project. I'll just mention those here. We had the carpentry, the windows and storefront facade area, drywall, plumbing, the HVAC systems, the electrical system, and the police gun range. The eighth contract is for the door hardware furnishing of the materials, and that was one that was kind of a holdover from the first bid package that we did earlier in the year. There was some due diligence that needed to happen with that one, just to dig into it a bit further. But ultimately, we have arrived at a conclusion for that and a recommendation for award. I'll just talk a little bit more about the best value process, which is a procedure that's authorized under state statutes where municipalities and government entities can put in place a criteria-based system to evaluate bids from contractors for procurement of projects and facilities and so forth. It takes into account more than just the price. Price is certainly among the criteria, and it's an important role, but also the contractor's similar experience, work history, the team that they've assembled and presented for consideration, reference checks, and some of those sorts of things. So, staff and our construction manager, Kraus Anderson, took all of this information together and under a review over the last several weeks since we received these bids on May 4th. And there is a scoring rubric that goes along with this to rank and assign scores in these various categories, ultimately arriving at a score by which the best value for the city is determined. The last part of that process that we had to do was interviews of the teams and the contractors that were among the top, scoring from the initial bid value and their price proposal. So, we brought them in. City Administrator Martin, Chief Dalstrom, and myself participated in those interviews, and we conducted them over the last several weeks. We just finished the last of those yesterday. So, we were finally able to work through that and get to the bottom line for scoring on each of the best value contracts. And so, what we have in the staff memo is a tabulation of where we landed on those. It is possible in this sort of system to have the best value contract be one that's other than the low bid, and we certainly did have that on a few of these. But I will note that going into the process, we expected the totality of the base bid for all of these various contracts to arrive at about $19.6 million. The best value, the sum of the best value contracts across these categories actually comes up to $19.45 million, and that is with alternate components added on top of the base bid. So, we're getting more than just the base bid and at a lower total cost than we expected to heading into this. So, I think that's good news all around. And I'll just segue from that into the bigger picture on the overall project cost. And accounting for all of these contracts, we're contemplating award of tonight along with the contract batches that have been approved at the last few council meetings. We're on a trajectory, conservative estimates for soft costs such as project management and contingencies and some of the unexpected things that you can run into with construction. We're on a trajectory to come in around $58 million for this project, which is just about $2 million under what we originally anticipated, the $60 million project on the front end. So, I think that's good news all around. I will note, there is one more contract hanging out there that we have to go out for bids again on. That's the landscaping contract. There was a discrepancy in some specification language on that one that was not realized until bids were in hand, and there were some wild swings in pricing there. So, we had to clean that up and give it another shot. That one we'll bring back to you at a future date. But that is among the contracts that I'm talking about in terms of accounting for everything when I say the $58 million. So, all in all, a pretty good picture here heading into construction phase. So, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, and stand for questions.
Open up to council. Any questions, comments from council? On here, coming down this way? All good? Great presentation. If there's no comments or questions, we're happy with the information provided. I'm looking for recommended action then.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution receiving bids and awarding contracts best value work scopes and doors, frames, and hardware scope on Public Works and Police Campus project.
I'll second.
Motion by Essler, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye. That completes nine A with a 4-0, receiving bids and award contract on these. Was this the second grouping? What's that? Oh, sorry. All right. That completes item nine A, the item for announcements, city staff updates. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, members of council. Just sticking in that vein of large projects, residents will see a silt fence installed on the Public Works Police Campus next week along with a security fence and likely a large plywood sign with the image of the building on it out on Biscayne Avenue. So, we have now the majority of the bid package approved by city council. We have the site access agreement with the National Guard, and so, we are kicking into gear next week. So, it's really, really exciting and just can't say that enough. And thank the council for the support. And Nick and Chief Dalstrom have done a fabulous job managing this project, and so, we're just so excited. So, some bonding work yet to come. You'll see that on your June 20th and July 11th meetings and some actions there as we sell bonds and take out some debt to fund the project. But the really exciting stuff is beginning. Sticking also in that vein, Lifetime, we expect to have a kind of a media opportunity, groundbreaking opportunity in the end of June for Lifetime groundbreaking, and then official grading starting right after the Fourth of July for Lifetime. And so, final documents are coming into form on Lifetime, and that'll be coming into the fold as well. So, two kind of generational projects happening here in the next 30 days. So, really, really excited about that. And Mayor, those are the only two things I had on my list, so I can give it back to you.
Thank you. Moving on to 10B, upcoming community calendar. On June 13th, all day, Farmer's Market. I think it says all day. It's actually from, what is it, one to five?
I think so, yep.
The Farmer's Market, St. Paul's Growers Association will be running their market. Again, just to note, this is not a city-run market, but it is by the St. Paul Growers Association, and they'll be located at the Rosemount Community Center, I believe, marking lot. On June 13th, also between 5:30 and 6:30, the Environmental and Sustainability Commission meeting, the kids' music in the park on June 15th, 10 to 11, Central Park. City offices will be closed to celebrate the Juneteenth holiday, June 19, 2023, all day. The Farmer's Market is an ongoing every Wednesday, I believe. So, from the 13th, it'll, I guess that's Tuesday, I'm sorry. So, seeing on Tuesday, announced the 13th is also happening on the 20th as well. And then, on the 20th, we'll have our regular Port Authority meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and this regular city council meeting from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And with that, if there's no other business to come before council, I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.